And so notice here by given with the County Commissioners Court will hold a regular meeting at the County District Attorney's Commission Courtroom at five seventy-six with Main Street in Rennell, Texas, seven eight five eight zero on Thursday, September eleventh, twenty twenty-five at ten AM for the purpose of discussing the following items. If during the course of the meeting any discussion of any item on the agenda to be had executive or closed session, Willis County Commissioners Court will convene an executive or closed session according to Section five five one point oh one of the Texas Grammar Code. To any final decision or final action or final vote be required the opinion of Willis County Commissioners Court with regards to any matter considering such close or executive meeting or session. Then the final decision final vote should be either in the open meeting covered by the notice upon the reconvening of the public meeting or the subsequent meeting of the Willis County Commissioners Court upon notice thereof as the county shall determine. So with that, I'm going to call this meeting to order. Madam Chief Deputy Clerk, could you establish a court, please?
Yes, yes, sir. I wish you proceed one. Um, we should proceed two.
Present.
We should proceed three.
Present.
We should proceed four.
Present.
I'm the county judge.
Present.
Do you have?
Thank you. Uh, please stand for your seat.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Did you make standing? Lord, we lived up all who have suffered from political violence, school shootings, and the tragedy of nine eleven. Please bring peace to grieving families, strength to survivors, and protection to our children and leaders. Help us heal with love, unity, and hope instead of feeding fear and hate. Let's have a moment of silence for yesterday's victims and the victims on nine eleven. Amen?
Maybe it's. Uh, so there we go to line item number four, public comments. There's not any, then we go to line item number, number five. Um, and as you know, commissioners, we've had, we had the public hearings of line item five, six, and seven, and I'll take one at a time. So number five, adoption of twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six proposed changes in compensation for elected officials. Can I entertain a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
I have a motion by Commissioner Garcia.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Alanis Morano. Any more discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And all opposed same sign, motion carries. Line item number, uh, six, adoption of the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six salary schedule. Can I entertain a motion to approve?
So move to.
I have a motion by Commissioner De La Paz. Can I entertain a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Alisa Morano. Any more discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And all opposed same sign, motion carries. Line item number seven, adoption of the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six Willis County budget, action required. Can I entertain a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
I have a motion by Commissioner Garcia.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Alisa Morano. Any more discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And all opposed same sign, motion carries. Line item number eight, discussion action to ratify the property tax rate in the fiscal year twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six, uh, county budget. And this one we need to ratify individually. And what we're approving is the, uh, total tax rate of point seven nine four six zero. Uh, Madam Chief Deputy Clerk, could you, uh, do a ratification of, uh, individually, uh, vote?
Yes, sir. Um, Commissioner Precedent one, do you vote for or against?
For.
Commissioner Precedent two, do you vote for or against?
For.
Commissioner Precedent three, do you vote for or against?
For.
Commissioner Precedent four, do you vote for or against?
For.
I'm the county judge, do you vote for or against?
For.
We had five for and zero against.
Okay, so therefore motion passes. Okay, any more? Okay, so then we go to line item number nine. Uh, adoption of the following tax rates through resolution. And basically commissioners, is what we just approved, but it's broken down. A, in the general fund, uh, maintenance and operation, we're adopting the point six four six six zero. Can I, uh, let's see, did we do this individually?
Yes, sir.
Can we ratify?
We do it in edit.
All right. We ratify that.
Okay. Uh, Commissioner Precedent one, do you vote for or against?
For.
Commissioner Precedent two, do you vote for or against?
For.
Commissioner Precedent three, do you vote for or against?
For.
Commissioner Precedent four, do you vote for or against?
For.
I'm the county judge, do you vote for or against?
For.
We had five for and zero against.
So we do, we do pass it. On, uh, line item general fund, uh, number two is the debt service slash interest and sinking, which is the same as last year, which is point zero one two four zero. Can you take, uh, a vote, please?
Yes, sir. Commissioner Precedent one, do you vote for or against?
For.
Commissioner Precedent two, do you vote for or against?
For.
Commissioner Precedent three, do you vote for or against?
For.
Commissioner Precedent four, do you vote for or against?
For.
I'm the county judge, do you vote for or against?
For.
We had five for, zero against.
Okay, motion passes. We go to, uh, line item B on the Roden Bridge. And the, uh, rate for Roden Bridge is zero point one three five six zero. Can you ratify the vote, please?
Yes, sir. Commissioner Precedent one, do you vote for or against?
For.
Commissioner Precedent two, do you vote for or against?
For.
Commissioner Precedent three, do you vote for or against?
For.
Commissioner Precedent four, do you vote for or against?
For.
I'm the county judge, do you vote for or against?
For.
We have five for, zero against.
Okay, uh, motion passes. And then we go to line item number ten, and that's approval of special claims for the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six of the following. A, postage, B, utilities, C, gasoline and diesel fuel payments, D, taxes, E, rents, F, contracts, G, payroll reports, H, drug enforcement, uh, I, communication expense, J, advertisement of treasurer's quarterly reports, K, state quarterly reports, Q, jury fees, R, debt service, S, court ordered attorney, T, all legal services, and U, all county vehicles registration. Can I entertain a motion to approve?
You missed it.
Oh, did I miss it? What?
L through the P.
Oh, oh yeah, I didn't come back. Okay, thank you, Commissioner. Okay, so I skipped L through P. L, travel advances, M, tax association of counties, N, grant expenditures, O, trust fund refunds, and P, refunds. Can I entertain a motion to approve?
So move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner De La Paz, second by Commissioner Garcia. Any more discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And all opposed same sign, motion carries. Line item, uh, eleven, approval of county clerk's record archival plan and report. And as you know, we did have a public hearing on that one as well. Can I entertain a motion to approve?
I will.
Second. I have a motion by Commissioner Alisa Morano, second by Commissioner Tejeda. Any more discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And all opposed same sign, motion carries. Line item number twelve, discussion action to approve contract between Willis County and PCT Tech four U for IT services for fiscal year twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six, action required. Uh, commissioners, uh, the contract, I believe, is yearly. And what, uh, what I'm proposing to approve is to increase the number of hours from seventy to seventy-six. And, and what that does is the per hour amount is staying the same. However, uh, uh, I'm of the opinion that we're needing more hours in order to be able to sustain all the changes we're making.
Correct. Long over that, um, there's major reform that underwent for website compliance, bringing up to ADA standards, and that's one of the treasures. Big concern is that ours is not up to par where it should be. Um, the state has put out a template of, uh, to go by and adhere to as far as it being ADA compliant, and they gave us a timeframe of April twenty twenty-six. Um, deadline to meet all requirements is, uh, coming to twenty twenty-seven, but they haven't enough in a month yet, I don't think. Um, the, there was a threshold where governments under forty thousand residents have, have, have already adhered to this policy or face fines. I think four counties, uh, failed to do so in North Texas. Um, other than that, uh.
Your, your scope of work services covers, uh, the department.
Correct.
I'm just curious, uh, that doesn't count, does that count for, like, the precinct bar?
It does, should there be any needs, um, people volunteer bar and residential issues. People that resident years.
Might be working smooth, so lately my surveillance cameras and things like that are kind of shaky, shaky, so.
Yeah, so just, uh, get with your formula with yourself, and then we address those needs.
And, uh, and, uh, Commissioner, just, uh, for information, and those, uh, adjustments have been, um, introduced to the, uh, to the new budget. Obviously, it's not per se, it's not mean that, that we have to pass it because it's under contracts and legals, there's a certain amount in there. So if, I guess what I'm saying is the budget does cover it, should we decide to, to approve it.
I, I did look into, uh, last, in this year, the amount that, uh, assuming that there's no extra for this month, it was going to come up to forty-seven thousand, uh, uh, with the extra amount, extra work that you had to do this past year. So the, uh, contract includes in there that any overage of the, the eighty hours, I think it's eighty hours, it's, it goes by a certain rate, and so it included all of that. So this past year was at forty-seven. I don't know what the new amount is, Carmen, uh, for, for, with the, with the increase.
It triggers, uh.
Forty-five thousand, six hundred.
Forty-five thou, that's after the adjustment, right?
Uh, with this new change.
Yes, with the new change. That's what it triggers, essentially.
No, no, and the only thing is that if there's a concern is, uh, that, that, uh, I had talked to, uh, Carmen about it, to not hit that fifty thousand threshold, is that potentially notifying you when it, if it gets to about forty-five. Because then that's where, where there needs to be, uh, I guess, uh, more caution on it.
Absolutely, yes, and we had that discussion, yes. Absolutely. What, what do these upgrades consist of? When you're talking about, um, the compliance?
Language, um, making sure that, that anything's covered with, meaning disability that people may have. But language is the, is the, is the main one that's up there. I mean, I just take away from any, any other, other disabilities, but.
Much good, and I guess, uh, you know, along with that, there's not any kind of cost effect affected by, by policies, maybe a little upgrade on that, on the website itself.
Right.
Got a few counties that are our size or mine that have a little bit more information. Maybe a little bit more user friendly, you know, a little more contactable. With this, uh, motion, so, move to approve. Second. I have a motion by Commissioner Tejeda, second by Commissioner Garcia. Any more discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And all opposed same sign, motion carries. Line item number thirteen, discussion action to authorize the use of fund from six four dash four zero zero dash one ninety-two committee involved for Willis County precinct event on September sixteenth, twenty twenty-five, action required. Then, uh, I think maybe we've got these two out of order, but, but I mean, I think we can address them. That's the way they were listed, but, uh, basically, we're asking for the use of community center. Oh, you, you get what I'm saying? Basically, you, you, you know, we'll, we'll address it over your next one. We go fourteen? We can go fourteen, they can go back. All right, Commissioner, with your permission, we're going to go line item number fourteen. Discussion action to authorize the use of Sebastian Community Center on, on, Sebastian Community Center on September sixteenth, twenty twenty-five for the Willis County precinct four community relations event to provide updates to the residents of Sev- uh, Sevastian on current and future projects, action required. I've been, uh, this, my line item, of course, uh, been several requests from the residents, kind of an update on, uh, some of the September floods, and there was another community event held by, uh, the citizens, and maybe kind of a follow-up on that and, uh, touch up on the, that one big, uh, street improvement, drainage improvement project. So, uh, we're, we're planning on that on September the sixteenth. Um, uh, basically, like I said, like a, just, just an informative type of, type of a meeting. Uh, so I'm hoping to be able to use the, the center for that. Yes, yes, and, and I think, Commissioner, you know, I applaud you for, uh, uh, obviously, the community went through a devastating, uh, event. And, uh, and, and I applaud you for keeping that community abreast as to what the county's efforts, and moreover, your efforts as a county commissioner to address those issues and see what it is that, that we have going and what it is that we can probably do in the future. But needless to say, to not communicate, uh, it's not the way how to address it. So I commend you for, for doing that. Sometimes it's not easy.
Oh, no.
But that, in my opinion, it's, it's, it's the way to, to, to do it with, with, uh, things that happen unforeseen, especially weather events. And, uh, we want to promote that, uh, that, uh. Sure, sure, thanks, uh. The, uh, the DA's office is going to have some victims coordinators, you know, that are, that have asked to approve. Fix the service. And then the, uh, I forget the name of the, the nine one one system, hyperreach. Hyperreach. We're going to try to get some people signed up for hyperreach and stuff like that. So there's, there's quite a, quite, quite a few things, uh, that are going forward. And if you're taking motion, that move to approve. I have a motion by Commissioner Garcia to approve.
Second.
And second by Commissioner Alisa Morano. Any more discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And all opposed same sign, motion carries. We go to line item number thirteen, discussion action to authorize the use of funds for, uh, from six four dash four hundred dash one ninety-two committee involved for Willis County precinct for event on September sixteenth of twenty twenty-five. There's a small amount in that, in that line item, uh, that I wanted to utilize to provide, uh, you know, it's, the meeting's at six, six thirty, it's kind of a time for everybody to eat. So we're going to try to have some refreshments, light, light stuff there for, for folks to come in. I have enough in there for that. Make a motion for that. Second. Yeah, I have a motion by Commissioner Garcia to approve, second by Commissioner De La Paz. Any more discussion?
Judge, would there be, uh, security, just given in light of recent event, would there be security, uh, at the, at your event, Commissioner?
We always invite the constable, so, uh, normally, uh, they might go, it's hopefully not, not an overtime issue, but I'll, I'll, I'll keep, uh, Commissioner or Constable Lessa involved, as well as the sheriff, I'll, I'll invite the sheriff to go on.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any more discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And all opposed same sign, motion carries. Line item number fifteen, discuss and approve Willis County joining the Purdue Direct settlement agreement to include authorizing the county judge to sign the participation settlement form and execute other documents required to do the settlement, action required. Uh, Missy, don't believe you know.
This is goes with the opioid settlements that we've had already for, since twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-three. I, I'm apologize right off of the bat because I used the wrong form, and Commissioner Zamorano Alanese's name was on, not on there. I went back and I used the old form because I already had gotten that language, and I just, I had like a, a, I say senior moment over there. Uh, and didn't, didn't realize that I didn't transfer to the new form, I used the old form, so I apologize for that. Uh, but that's what this is. Uh, I did verify that with the Attorney General's office just because we got some random, you know, uh, you, you get those emails that say, uh, like, somebody, somebody from, a prince from somewhere, if you sign this or that. And so we did verify that, that, that Rubus was an actual verifiable settlement. Uh, and in fact, they notified us that it was going to be coming. And sure enough, we got that, uh, this, the deadline, uh, to participate is in, at the end of October. So it just means that part of the seven month in the county will, will receive some of those funds. I looked at the calculation sheet, and so I only see a total for all of Texas. I don't see the breakdown per county, but, uh, it was, um, seven million? I believe it was seven million, seven billion, excuse me, that may have been coming to, to Texas. I, I can't remember the exact amount, but, um, it, we're, we're part of that whole amount that would be coming to Texas. So that's not the amount we're getting, but that would be the amount. It's typically based on population and the number of political entities that, uh, sign on to the settlement agreement.
Uh, can I entertain a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Second, a motion by Commissioner Garcia, second by Commissioner Tejeda. Any more discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And all opposed same sign, motion carries. Line number sixteen, discuss and approve inter- internship program for the district attorney's office for law students, college graduates, and current students in their senior year and or junior year from Willis County High School for fiscal year twenty twenty-six, action required.
Um, on this one, I was approached by a recent college graduate that's interested in going to law school about trying to do some internships in the office. I've also been approached by some law schools on whether or not we could, uh, during the summer or the fall, just kind of depending if they could also participate in our office. And before I could, can tell them yes or no, I just wanted to bring it before you all, if that is something that, uh, would be agreeable. In the past, we have had some seniors and juniors, uh, actually from La Sada, um, that have participated with, uh, coming to the school, and they, excuse me, excuse me, coming from school, like, with their schedule. I don't know if it's a class that they get, or they have a free period, but they come in and it's their counselor is aware of it, and we work with the counselor, but they come in as well, and, uh, depending on the schedule, they're able to observe, they're able to look at some of the files. Uh, we're real careful about confidentiality when there's issues on really, uh, very serious, uh, in cases that may be involved children, they don't have access to that, depending on their age. But, uh, we do try to involve them in the process. Sometimes they're interested in, in, uh, different parts of, uh, the criminal justice system. So we want to make sure we're making that especially accessible to Willis County residents.
It's part of the, um, the career technical education program.
That's what it is, yes. And I know that, uh, after I put this in on the agenda, uh, the Life at School District, uh, contacted me about the, that, uh, similar program that we've approved, uh, that you all have approved in the past, but I'll be bringing that one up separately at the next, at the next meeting. This is just so that if, uh, a student or a school district gets ahold of me that I can then start engaging with them about, and I'll still bring those to you, the MOUs with the schools, but, uh, this would become more like individual students, if they're on break in the summer or during, um, a lot of people are now online going to school that they can also attend, uh, incoming and observe and do these, they call them internships and externships. During the summer, they're internships because they're here, uh, but, uh, that would, that's what that is. It's an unpaid, I'll have, I would have a form that they would have to fill out, uh, that would explain their, their, the rules, but I would, if that started, it, it approved.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Alisa Morano, second by Commissioner Tejeda. Any more discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And all opposed same sign, motion carries. Line item number seventeen, approve of monthly reports.
Move to approve, move to approve.
I have a motion by Commissioner De La Paz, second by Commissioner Garcia. Any more discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And all opposed same sign, motion carries. Uh, line item number eighteen, approve of travel requests.
Travel reimbursement for District Attorney Nancy Mahalza for attending the STU Executive Board Meeting on March the seventh, twenty twenty-five in Austin, Texas, action required. Travel request for General Division Office Alan Castillo to attend the J D O basic training being held on September the twenty, October the third, twenty twenty-five for this city of Texas to be paid out of the Texas General Department funding, action required. Child request for General Division Office Alu Dassa to attend the J D O eighteen conference being held on October the nineteenth through October twenty-second, twenty twenty-five in San Antonio, Texas to be paid out of the Texas General Department funding, action required. Child request for Deputy Marcelino Torres to attend the advanced law enforcement readiness training course security seminar being held on September the sixteenth through the eighteenth, twenty twenty-five in Austin, Texas to be paid out of the LEO, L E O S E account, number thirty-five dash one hundred dash one sixty, action required. Child request for Investigator Jose Casanera to attend the BS Narcotics Confidential Exponent developed managed trainings on October the first, twenty twenty-five in Park, Texas, non overnight, action required. Child request for Investigator Jose Casanera to attend the BS Narcotics Relics Techniques Training on October the second, twenty twenty-five in Park, Texas, non overnight, action required. Child request for Precedent one, Commissioner Nicaela Zamorano Alanese to attend the hundred and third annual CJ C A of Texas Conference on October the sixth through the ninth, twenty twenty-five in Delveston, Texas, action required.
Commissioner, as you know, the, the, uh, travel, uh, and training we're approving is basically for going to the next year, right? And, uh, we, we approved for that particular line item the same amount as we did, uh, last year at sixty-nine thousand. I think, uh, we, uh, we came pretty close, uh, to it. So, uh, I'm confident that, uh, that we, uh, we should be okay, uh, going forward into the next year's, uh, budget. I just wanted to point that out.
Move to approve.
I have a motion by Commissioner Garcia to approve.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Alanis Morano. Any more discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And all opposed same sign, motion carries. And line team, approval of tre- uh, treasurer's report. Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
I mean, our investments are looking good.
I mean, our investments are looking good. Uh we still haven't seen a rate increase, but I know the feds should be meeting soon and that could we could get lower interest rates when that happens. Uh one thing I noticed, and I did confirm with the auditorium, is just on the very last pages, it has each precinct's budget. And it does show some items that are negative, but that's because the budget amendments haven't been inputted. So once she does that, you know, it'll it'll be fine.
All right.
I think those are being presented uh next item probably.
Oh, okay, yeah, the the last of the years of amendments.
Yes.
All right, anything else?
Yeah.
Did you see?
No, sir.
All right. If not, uh can I contain motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Second. Motion by Commissioner Garcia, second by Commissioner Tejera. Any more discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And all opposed, same sign, motion carries. Line item twenty, approve of budget amendments.
Well, I have twenty six uh pages of budget amendments for departments. There's a lot of uh line items, so I guess I can just approve as presented.
Is there anything you need to bring up in particular? I would suggest that she address the ones that maybe you all wanna, that might be uh beyond the budget. Uh I think usually that's what you've done in the past, Judge.
Yes.
I I would request that my uh budget items be or my uh budget amendments, if the Commissioners' Court is okay with that, moving it to the twenty fourth. There's still some uh uh questions I have with one of my grants that I need to get answered before I can present that one. And uh rather than trying to trying to do some of it this time and then having to change it again in two weeks, I'd rather just do it one time. And because it involves, I have one, two, three, four, five funds that would be potentially impacted. So for the DAs, I'm requesting uh for that reason to to move those budget amendments to the twenty fourth.
And also I needed to just um clean up uh Capital Fund and uh ARPA, just the last portion, so I wanted to include those in that Commissioners' Court meeting. So uh most of the budget line items are are within the the count or they're budget line items, the in and outs. Uh there's just a few that we had to move uh from admin, from the Administration Department, and that just happened to contingency because of like some of the fixed costs that had gone up, like in the Sheriff's Office, the utilities, uh the insurance. Um, let me see, that was in the jail. And it's not gonna roll over to the new year. This is just to make sure that, you know, they have coverage because it was a fixed cost increase. It wasn't really related to their budget, but for this new year, it's already rolled back to the way they had it. So it's not gonna increase their budget anymore. It's just that the line items won't be negative. Let me see, who else? Oh, there was one for District Clerk uh because of their technology maintenance agreement that had gone up. So uh I hadn't moved enough funding to cover the that new uh LGSF program or.
Yes.
Yeah, and um so I I just moved money, enough money to cover this year, but for next year, I did take into consideration the new rates. So next year's, they should be fine and they shouldn't have any more increases.
And and on that one, Judge, there was a refund coming from I-Doc, and so I've gotten the information, so I'll be requesting that. It may come out, like it may wash itself out, the increase, but it's not gonna happen until after this budget year is over. Uh I just knew that there was no way we were gonna be able to get it by September the thirty, but I am working on uh with I-Doc and on getting that uh that refund uh taken care of and returned to us.
So in this year, if it's a higher amount, well, next year it's gonna go back to that account and it should offset what we over technically, like what we paid in advance or overpaid this year. Next year, they'll they'll have a a credit and it should uh reduce the expense for when the reimbursement comes in. And let's see, that was basically the sheriff, the jail, health and welfare. Uh that was moving money into Maintenance Department. So maybe we can look at those pages, that one's an even in and out uh increase and decrease. Unless you have questions. District Clerk, it was only three thousand eight hundred and thirty five dollars.
And and but uh so it's not health and welfare, it's administration. It's the administration budget, not the health and welfare.
No, health and welfare also had to uh.
The jail?
Is it on here?
Yes, sir. Um page. Uh page nine, it reduced their budget by twenty thousand five hundred and it gave that funding to the Maintenance Department to help cover its costs.
Okay.
So Maintenance Department got an increase of twenty thousand five hundred, but it came from health and welfare.
Okay. And then the administration was also under, right?
Yes, there was other charges that the administration gave to the sheriff, the district clerk, to cover those fixed costs and expenses.
All right. Thank you. All right, so it does that cover all of the ones that uh are above and beyond?
Yes, that should another, there's there's still quite a few, but we're gonna wait for it and that's because hers is the biggest uh funds. So hers will be next meeting, so it'll be like another another bunch with capital and um ARPA as well.
I believe mine will be five or six funds.
Yes.
I don't remember how many they are, so.
Yeah, there's uh there's all.
All right. And I entertain a motion to approve.
Move to approve.
I have a motion by Commissioner Garcia to approve.
Second.
And second by Commissioner Alisa Morano. Any more discussion?
With exception from the District Attorney's.
With the exception of, yeah, well, they're not on here.
The DAs and the Capital Fund.
Capital Fund and the ARPA.
And ARPA Fund. Those budget amendments will be on.
And I think the in ones, I just recalled the the Indigent Defense, but those are just to match it to the grant portion, so I just need to make uh some um corrections or onto the amounts, but that's Indigent Defense, Fund thirteen. I just remembered right now.
All right, so I have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And all opposed, same sign, motion carries. Line item number twenty one, approve of tax collector's report.
I can see, it's kind of slowed down, but. In the collection.
All right.
Need to collect it.
Okay, so let's see, and this is August.
Yes.
We got one more month. All right, so it looks like on the uh on budget versus actual, we're two two forty four over.
Yes.
And on delinquent?
We're twenty three.
We're twenty three.
More, collected more.
Collected?
Yes.
Okay, so what percentage of? And we're.
For the budget, for the.
Okay, and on a percent to to tax is ninety four point four six collection rate, correct? Is that I'm reading it right?
Mm-hmm.
And as far as percent to budget, we're a hundred and three percent. We we know where the budget.
Yes.
As far as collection. All right, and on delinquent, we're at a hundred and eight percent collection rate.
Yes.
And we're at a hundred and twelve point three three uh collection versus budget. It's pretty close.
So move to approve the numbers.
I have a motion by Commissioner Tejera.
Second.
To approve, and second by by Commissioner Alisa Morano. Any more discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And all opposed, same sign, motion carries. Line item number twenty two, review of special claims.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Y. On special claims, my dear, not not to put you on the spot, but since it's towards the end of the fiscal year, what are we adding comparison to what we expected to be, or is there?
I haven't made that analysis. That's just basically our monthly payments that uh they'll just uh pre-approved today for the new fiscal year, but this is for the current year, so I don't keep track of how much.
But we're not a we're not out of wire, we're there's no eye openers, it's just.
No, no, it's just regular payments that we have to pay contracts, uh grants, those type of payments.
All right, there's no action required on that.
No.
Is there any comments or questions on that? We go line item number twenty three, review monthly reports on county jail, uh county, a jail count. I think we're at seventy six.
Seventy six.
Seventy six. Um, we're we're doing well on that, and I think uh the judicial side and jail side, I think we're doing well on that. Uh is there any uh questions or comments on that? We go to line item number twenty four, review of monthly employee overtime report. If there's no questions and comments on that, then we go to line item twenty five, executive session, confer with County Commissioner League of Counsel and deliberation regarding pending capital pay litigation involving the county, its employees, and its interest. Or C, confer with Commissioner's Court League of Counsel regarding legal issues and real estate acquisitions. Do you have anything, Ms. Elmer?
Uh, I might have something the next meeting, Judge, but I don't think it's anything that's really moved uh at this point. For my part on uh anything that has to do with litigation pending or contemplated or planned.
But now we go line item number twenty six, action relative to executive session, A, B, and C, can I take a motion to take no action?
Move to approve.
I have a motion by Commissioner Garcia, second by Commissioner Tejera. Any more discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And all opposed, same sign, motion carries. Line item twenty seven, can I take a motion to adjourn? I have a motion by Commissioners Alisa Morano.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Tejera, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And all opposed, same sign, motion carries. Thank you, Commissioners.